Good afternoon. Welcome to the April 28th Policy Section of the Phoenix City Council. Thank you so much for joining us today. We'll begin with a call to order and a roll call. Tony?
Councilman DeCecio?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilman Nowakowski?
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor? Councilwoman Pastor? Councilwoman Stark?
Here.
Councilman Waring?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wardado?
Here.
Mayor Gallego?
Here. Thank you so much. We are very lucky to be joined today by Dr. Tim Lant, who is a lead modeler and is currently with the Arizona State University Modeling Task Force in support of many efforts, including our state Arizona Department of Health Services work against COVID-19. Dr. Lant holds a PhD in Applied Mathematics from Arizona State University. He has served our country at the highest levels, fighting for our health care, including as the Director of the Modeling Division of the Department of Health and Human Services, also leadership roles with Biomedical Advanced Research Development Authority in leadership, and has worked on many outbreaks, including previous influenza outbreaks, Ebola, Zika, you name it. He has helped decision makers understand what is happening and how decisions may affect the models and what the outbreak may look like depending on where policy goes. We are certainly very lucky to have a person with his expertise in Arizona and even more lucky to have him advising us and joining us today. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Lant.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that kind introduction. So hello, everyone. Good afternoon. As the mayor said, I've been working on a number of different issues. So I'm one of the modelers that are working to figure out what's going on with the COVID-19 situation in Arizona. There's a few of us engaged in this kind of work, and there's a broader scientific community engaged in a whole variety of activities. So I'm happy to share with you what it is that we're doing and how we think about this particular situation right now. I'd like to pull my slides up. I don't know if I need help to do that or if there's a different way to do that. Tony, is that something that you can help me with, or do I share as I did when trying to set up again?
You can share.
I think the file is loading. It just needs 10 seconds or so.
We can now see a first slide, scenarios and projections for COVID-19 in Arizona.
Excellent. Success. Great meeting. Okay, there we go. So yeah, so I am a mathematical epidemiologist by training. I hold a PhD in math. I have a master's degree in actuarial science, and I'm an Arizona State University alumni. So a little bit about me, who I am. So first of all, I should let you guys know that I've lived in Arizona for about 22 years now. I'm an extrovert. I love sports, concerts, restaurants, theater, and festivals, and I live all across the United States. So I am particularly interested in getting the city reopened so that I can do the things that I love again. However, I'm also an expert in pandemic modeling and response. I've been doing this since the early 2000s, over 20 years specifically building quantitative models and tools to bring what we would call prediction sciences forward. So situations that require the ability to peer into the future and use mathematics to do so, that's what I specialize in. So the current situation that we're dealing with right now, there's a lot of important facts that we have to wrestle with when it comes to figuring out questions like, is it safe to reopen? So just a quick background, we're still seeing an increase in cases in the state of Arizona and in Maricopa County. We're monitoring those on a daily basis, and we have reached a plateau of sorts. So it's leveled off, and we certainly aren't increasing as fast as we were. But cases are still trending upward. We're also increasing our testing capacity in the state. This is excellent. However, we're still behind testing targets, and there's a number of testing targets that have been put out by CDC, Johns Hopkins, and other partners in this. So we're at about a third of the way up to what most estimates would say are a needed testing capacity as we go forward. We're also looking at the phases of opening up America again, what needs to be done based on the White House plan for reopening. Currently, we have a set of criteria that we have to reach for 14 consecutive days. We have made it through that set of criteria for three days consecutively, and we're continuing to tick through this. So it's not very much. At one point, we were closer to 11 days, and then because the criteria is the case counts have to go down, we had one day that was a peak for us last week, and then that whole 14-day timer restarts. So it's not that we can work our time off against this 14 days, but it's a 14-day period that we have to monitor very, very closely. So the soonest that we can open according to the White House criteria is May 11. There's increasing intensity of social distancing measures that are in place. We've gone through three different rounds of social distance measures in Phoenix, from stay-at-home orders to closing businesses. So everyone is following these very, very, very closely. Looking just at data, we can show a trend where we reduce transmission and therefore reduce hospitalizations and deaths as a direct result of the decisions to close businesses and limit social distancing. The key policy drivers that we're now looking at are public safety, underreporting and testing of cases, and knowing exactly how much disease is in the population that we have to contend with, the severity of the disease itself. In particular, we have cases that spread asymptomatic, and if we don't get those cases identified and use tracing in order to find them and isolate them, they can go on to spread more cases. And we have a potential for summer effects in Arizona. We don't know exactly what's going to happen this summer in terms of the epidemiology of this disease, but there are a number of factors that we're watching as the heat comes. Our work is done in close collaboration with ADHS. As part of the governor's executive order, data is made available to this working group from the state's medsys reporting system. We also get information on hospitalization and deaths and hospital resources from a number of data systems. So we're dealing with the best available data that we can, and we're using this in order to create projections for infections and the medical resources that are needed in this state. We share this information with the state, the state Health Department, and other members from the universities who serve on the modeling group. The current data that we have for detected cases is shown here. The yellow curve is the daily incidence data. So these are the total number of positive test results measuring cases that we get every single day. The reason that we have three lines here in addition to the yellow one is by using averages, we can smooth out what these trend lines are, and it makes it easier for all of us to see what the trend is. And so on around the 5th of April, it looks like there's a short peak, and cases started to fall a little bit. With this level of variability, that could have just been from not testing enough, or it could have been that there was a short reduction in cases due to distancing. And then the signal picks up again. And so right now, over the past two weeks, we've looked at back-to-back increases in cases as shown by the gray line. The question that everyone wants to know, especially in light of the executive order that expires at the end of this month, is is it safe to reopen businesses in Arizona? And if it's not safe to open them now, when will it be? The gating criteria that was proposed by the White House contains a recipe for what we need to do in order to think about this. And I want to draw your attention in particular to the middle column on cases. It's very important. It's probably the cleanest signal that we get because over on the left-hand side, the criteria for symptoms address both influenza-like illness and COVID-like illness. Those are going to be signals of an increase in respiratory virus in the community, but not necessarily confirmed cases. The column in the middle is specifically for confirmed cases within the last 14 periods. We do need to have a fewer number of confirmed cases to feel positive that the pandemic is subsiding from Arizona. In order to do that without a measurement error, though, we also have to have adequate testing. We need to have a downward trajectory of positive tests as a percent of total tests for 14 days straight. And what this means is we can't cheat on the testing in order to get fewer cases. On the right, the hospital care setting is also the only outcome. The other metrics here are things that we want to know. The hospital information about whether or not we're exceeding our hospital capacity has everything to do with whether or not an individual that catches the coronavirus, the COVID-19 disease, needs to go to the hospital can actually get the standard of care that we intend to give those, that they have adequate medical supplies, including PP&amp;E for healthcare workers, and also that there's equipment such as mechanical ventilators that are available to provide treatment. Right now, we have not passed our surge capacity, and we have about four to five times the capacity based on current hospital levels. So that's a very good sign. We want to make sure that we keep it that way. The last issue here is a testing program. A testing program placed for healthcare workers specifically, including emerging antibody testing. So we can monitor this over well. So we have to match all six of these criteria in order to move from phase zero to phase one. So the answer to this question is that we can use policy directives to keep the new case count controlled for 14 days. These are often called non-pharmaceutical interventions. Pharmaceutical interventions are things like vaccines, but we don't have any vaccines for coronavirus yet. So we're limited to non-pharmaceutical interventions plus diagnostic tools in order to control the spread of the disease. And this is something that's been known for public health for decades. The other thing that we need to do as we go through this is to protect the healthcare system at all costs to ensure appropriate care, avoid surge, treat patients without crisis care. We cannot keep everyone from contracting the COVID-19 disease. Cases will be imported, cases will circulate around the world, and we anticipate that there's going to be community-level transmission that's extremely difficult to get rid of completely. So we have to get used to the idea that the coronavirus is a disease that we can't eliminate, we have to manage. And the management criteria that we care the most about is that we can save as many lives as possible in our healthcare system. What do we need to do in order to make sure that the healthcare system doesn't get overrun? Well, the answer is that the healthcare system will get overrun if we start to have an increase in deaths, ventilator needs, patients in the intensive care unit in hospitals, and hospitalized cases. Of all of the cases that we have been paying attention to globally since December and January of this year, we have been assembling a vast body of medical literature that explains how this disease progresses over time. And it takes about two weeks to break a cycle of individuals contacting each other, coming into contact in grocery stores and restaurants and movie theaters, to when those individuals put a strain on the healthcare system. That means that every policy that we consider, whether it's reopening a particular type of business, or asking people to change their distancing patterns with each other, allowing or disallowing groups of 10 or larger in order to meet again, all have to go through this two-week cycle. So when new policies are formulated and implemented, we should start a timer. We should watch carefully for the next few weeks, and we should look to detect a signal. If we recognize a signal, and it's acceptable to us, and it protects the healthcare system, we've implemented a good policy that we can live with, assuming that it doesn't have any negative externalities. So that's the process that we wanted to. Think about two weeks in terms of a complete progression of the disease from asymptomatic cases all the way through when that round of the disease might need medical care. If we look at the total number of case counts, again, I've highlighted a 14-day window here, the most 14 recent days. This is the most recent experience that we have that determines the criteria for reopening. If we look at this curve, what we see is that growth has slowed. In Arizona, there are currently low hundreds of cases per day, around 200 per day. It's gone as high as 300. Yesterday, I think we had around 190. But the policies that we've implemented are clearly working. This curve does not show exponential growth. It shows something that looks more like linear growth. And although it's steep and continuing to go up, this is not an out-of-control epidemic at this time. This curve also does not include undetected cases. In the news today, Governor Cuomo announced that 24.7% of individuals in New York who took serological surveys showed that they had some antibodies to coronavirus. So that's an example of the state having a huge number of underreported cases and what that does to the healthcare system. Our underreported cases here are surely less than that, but they're still more than the total number of cases that we can see. So we can anticipate somewhere probably between three and five times as many cases for every case that's known. So where are we in terms of the 14-day counter? If we are required to have a decreasing trend in the number of cases for 14 days, there are two tasks that we need to do in order to understand that we've reached that. The first is knowing, are we at the lowest case rate in the last 14 days? Based on the graph above, the answer is no. We've gone three days since the highest peak, and we are not at the lowest case number across this entire graph. There are lower case numbers back on April the 14th and also on April the 20th. So the answer to both of these criteria to reopen is no. And the soonest that we can change the answer to yes for these criteria is 11 days into the future. So the soonest that Arizona will reach the 14-day criteria based on today's data is May 11. I'm pleased to announce that with one additional day of data, which didn't make it into the slides that I have processed already, we did reach day four. So we have 10 more days to go according to this criteria. The second criteria that we have is that we have to have a decreasing test positive rate, and we have to have either constant or increased testing. And that's what this slide shows. The blue bar charts represent the total amount of tests that we have done each day. The axis on the left side of the graph shows that we're testing around 2,000 tests per day at the present testing schedule. You can also see the red line. The red line takes off and then it drops back down once a testing program comes into place. And what you can see is that our red line is slowly moving to the right at a slightly increased rate with an average positive confirmed test rate of just over 10% currently. We need the positive confirmed test rate to decrease for 14 consecutive days with the same criteria used on the last slide without decreasing the number of tests shown by the blue bar graph. We want to see a decrease in cases, an increase in testing, and a decrease in proportion of positive tests because those are the signs that we're marshaling an effective response and using tools like contact tracing and testing in order to find as much disease as possible and then break its forward transmission into other individuals. Bending the curve is working. In Arizona in particular, by looking at this graph, we can see where the curve bends. This graph is called a log-log graph because instead of trying to draw an exponential curve, it just looks at the rate of increase of new cases. There's three periods of time. At the beginning, on the left side of this graph, you can see that the graph is weakly. Then we go through a period where the line is approximately a straight line marked by the red cause arrows. And we can see from this graph that during the period of time, we have exponential rate of new cases at the same slope of that line. Then, after policies to close businesses that occurred during that window, the curve bends, and it is at a different slope marked by the yellow curves. This shows clearly with data that the policies to implement social distancing have worked, the disease was diverted from a natural trajectory, and we have saved countless lives because of this action. Each policy action has an effect within one to two weeks after implementation. And by continuing to track this curve, we can continue to make forward-looking estimates about what we anticipate new transmissions, new hospitalizations, new needs for ventilators and ICU beds, and mortality will be over time. We created five different projections based on the key drivers. We don't know exactly what's going to happen. The point of this modeling is not to predict the future. It is not to make our best guess despite anything that happens. The point of this modeling is to show the impact of policy decisions and scientific uncertainties like the effect of Phoenix's weather this summer on outcomes for this disease. We consider five scenarios. I'll talk you through them. Our outputs are the number of infected, hospitalized patients, patients in an ICU, and patients on a ventilator. We also looked at three excursion scenarios to look at what happens if we open too quickly and what conditions are required when we do reopen. Here are the five scenarios. There's a lot of detail here, and the details aren't necessary. I'll talk you through them on the slide. But what you should know is that we model a best-case scenario. We model a scenario with moderate transmission where all cases are known and assumes a perfect testing system. We show you what our best fit to the data is. This is a way to estimate the number of unknown cases. It is very important. We also offer a limited reopening scenario to look at the effects of reopening now. And we have a late testing scenario, which is a scenario that looks at what if the first wave of disease actually made it into Phoenix's population before we realized it was doing so, and so we had a lot of undetected cases. I'm pleased to say that Scenario 5 is a pretty bad fit, and our experience has been changing from this scenario. So it's less likely, and also it means that we've done well with our policies. Let's look at the total infected people and how we can protect our healthcare system by keeping this number low. The total infected cases assume asymptomatic who may be transmitting the disease. Here are the projections that we run. The way that we run these projections is we fit our data to historical data, and then based on today's date of April 28th, we can move forward through time with a range of different estimates. The first thing that you'll notice is on the 28th of April, the height of each of these curves is different. That is on purpose. The reason for that is the scenarios do include undetected cases. And so for the scenarios that are up higher, so the blue curve for Scenario 1 and the yellow curve for Scenario 4, those are scenarios with higher levels of undetected cases. And so the reporting wouldn't match with what's actually happening. But when these people arrive at the hospital or die, then those numbers are important. So that's why we make sure that we can handle it this way. I think the most likely scenario where we are right now is the gray scenario. And then the best-case scenario, which is Scenario 1, was a scenario that was actually looking pretty good about two weeks ago, and now is looking like it's less likely because cases continue to remain steady and even go up. Summer effect is an important thing that we should pay attention to in Phoenix. There is no scientific evidence that the coronavirus spreads less easily human to human and that the pandemic will burn itself out simply because it gets hot outside. However, as someone who's been around Phoenix for a very long time, I know that our interaction patterns do change in the summer. We're more likely to stay home. We're less likely to have mass gatherings. And with orders in place, some of these things change. There are exceptions to this, of course. Movie theaters in the summer are quite popular. That would be a source of transmission, and so are bars and restaurants. We know that the virus doesn't do well in the environment, and it can die if it's on an exposed surface for several hours. But we don't know whether or not that period of time is short enough to avoid forward transmission. So we're going to watch this closely, and the scientific answer is that there are many factors that indicate this could go up or down or be neutral, and we don't know yet. So we have to watch for that as a scenario. In terms of the healthcare system, looking at our more likely scenarios from where we are, we anticipate between about 200 and 400 people needing hospitalization and ICU beds if we continue to trend up at the current rate by the time summer arrives and cases start to decrease again due to a summer effect. In the ICU, the number is slightly smaller. We assume that we have between about 180 and 250 cases under the likely scenarios in the middle that are gray and orange. This is to protect the number of ICU beds that we have available and continue to reserve enough of those for surges in COVID cases. As we reopen, these curves could have little bumps on them. We could be causing little clusters to emerge that would then come into the healthcare system. So you might think of this graph someday looking like a sawtooth or some kind of function that's a little bit more bumpy if we're trying to do as much as we possibly can to open up businesses, but not enough to have risk on the healthcare system becoming overrun. And then there's also an extremely long tail on cases. People that get sick from the coronavirus disease can be sick and recover in up to a month. It can take a very long time to go through this. Next, we look at the excursions. You'll note on the left, I have excursions 1, 2, and 5 with scenarios 3 and 4. The reason for this is I just wanted to take the two best-fitting scenarios that we had, which are Scenario 3 and 4, and then look at those relative to a slow opening scenario, a moderate opening scenario, and a fast reopening scenario. These curves show the effect of opening back up with different policies on different dates. The yellow and gray lines are what we brought over from the last graph. They are likely outcomes from our work. I included the yellow line because it includes a pre-closure growth rate, and if we had not closed, that's the curve that we would have been on before. As you can see, for the first period of time, it has a similar shape to the blue curve. The blue curve is a scenario where we would reopen businesses on May 1st, and we would assume that beta, which is a variable used for the amount of transmission. If we set the transmission amount equal to what it was prior to the closures and then return to that blue line, we would rapidly accumulate cases with exponential growth. Again, this is not a prediction. I would suggest that by the time we hit 20,000 new cases a day in Phoenix, our hospitals would already be overrun, and we would have to close businesses again, and the blue line would lead to a scenario where we have repeated openings and closures over time. So when we consider the economic impacts of closing businesses and the benefits of reopening those, we should also be mindful of the economic impacts of having to close and reopen businesses several times. There is a cost associated with that as well. The orange scenario is a moderate scenario. The moderate scenario returns us to the level of growth that we had in the interim period in our growth curve. And it's what we would use for a parameter where we're estimating future cases based on not complete closure of businesses, but limitations on gatherings. And then the green line is indicative of where we were during the early April period of time where we were leveled off and slightly decreasing, followed by reopening where we increased our transmission rate to .2. That's about where we are right now. So even though we're increasing a little bit right now, we can sustain this prolonged increase. But please note that the number of new cases goes down first. If you can suppress the number of new cases as far as possible before reopening, that means that as new cases start to accumulate, you have more time to identify those cases. Monitor their impact on the healthcare system, make decisions if they're necessary. So based on this chart, this is adequate scientific evidence to make the statement that reopening now or on May 1st would lead to a return of COVID reinfection and potentially put us on a growth curve that has exponential growth to it, which is what we've been able to avoid to date. So when can we reopen Arizona and what needs to be done? We need to keep the new case count as low as possible. We have social distancing as a tool, and we have test trace-isolate as a tool. In order to stop transmission, we need to be able to test, test, test. There are two types of tests. One type of test is called a molecular test, and it measures an active infection with the SARS-CoV-2 virus. The second type of test is a serological test, and these are the tests that can be used for measuring whether or not you've been exposed to coronavirus disease already. They're different tests. They're used for different purposes. For interventions where the goal is to find newly infected people and people who have no signs of infection but are transmitting the disease, you need to test them with a molecular test. you need to test them with a molecular test. If they test positive, we need to have an individual contact them, inform them that they tested positive, even though they may be asymptomatic, and then notify all of the other individuals that that person could have infected to let them know that they should isolate and monitor themselves for symptoms of the disease while limiting transmission to their friends and family and coworkers. This is the only way to break the cycle because evidence shows there's a two-day period of time in most cases where people are unaware that they're sick, but they are transmitting virus and can reinfect other people. And it's that 48-hour window prior to symptom onset that's the most important. The second thing that we can do to reopen Arizona is to open up gradually and carefully. We can follow the White House plan to open up gradually. The plan is sound. It needs to be implemented in a way that's specific to Phoenix and the state of Arizona, but it can be done, and it promises to work. We can avoid costly intermittent reopening. We can also monitor closely policies and their effect on future COVID cases. It does take a couple of weeks. If the testing is imperfect, the analysis can be difficult and time-consuming. But if we're mindful about the timing of interventions and how we use them, we can pull clean signals out of the data that have meaningful scientific information that can help you as city leaders to chart the best course for the city of Phoenix. I can give you one example of this. On Sunday of this week, for the first time, we passed 100 degrees in our temperature. This is going to have a very rapid and dramatic change in what we call the summer effect, and now we're watching this very closely. I'll be able to answer that question for you in two weeks' time. This is an extremely complicated situation. I know that we've all been paying attention to what's happening in other parts of the world, and in particular, New York City, which is by far the largest outbreak in America right now. It's extremely challenging. Once you put policies in place, you have to let them play out. But if things start to go sideways, even an immediate reaction doesn't guarantee an immediate response. So thank you for your service on behalf of myself and Arizona State University, the folks who are working on the ADHS Modeling Working Group. I'm happy to share this information with you and hope that this information is helpful in your deliberation processes. And I'm happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Land, and to all of the folks who have worked to produce this information. Every state is responding to the criteria that the federal government released for reopening, but few are so lucky to have a model of your expertise who can really show visually what is happening in Arizona and what real data says about whether or not we meet the criteria, which, as you have very effectively said, we currently do not do. It was wonderful to see the model of us bending the curve that really represents lives saved. One of the great challenges of COVID-19 is that we all see the costs, the burdens that every Phoenician is facing. But you can't introduce someone to the person whose lives they've saved. You can, however, show that graph, and it really did show that in response to policy put in place, COVID-19 did spread more slowly in Phoenix and in Arizona. So it was good to see. Policy really does matter here. We have important decisions facing the state of Arizona. You showed very much that testing is essential. We have to know what is happening. Even as we've increased testing, we have not yet seen that full downward trend that we want. It was quite sobering to see the model that showed huge amount of growth. If we do reopen this Friday, the virus will spread in a big way. That model shows. So that is something that policymakers need to understand. I did see that the state and the Department of Health in particular shared your model. So if people want to see this in more depth, you can see it on the Arizona Department of Health Services website, which I imagine there are people watching today who are very interested in this data and will want to know more. So another good resource with our state. Thank you again for sharing your expertise and for being willing to take questions from members of the Phoenix City Council and to help us inform the very difficult decisions that we have in front of us. We'll now open it up to Councilmember questions.
Mayor?
Councilwoman DeCecio.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for being here, doctor. Appreciate it. So were you able to model or at least see the trend in hospitalizations at all that have been occurring the last two, three, four weeks?
Yes, we have. We have access to hospital bed data, and that data is shared with us, so we do monitor it.
So, no, but what are those numbers in the last few weeks? I mean, what are we seeing with hospitalizations?
Yeah, I don't have any charts to pull up and share with you, unfortunately. But it's around a couple hundred cases per day that are tested and confirmed positive. And then there's an additional probably 20 to 30% of cases that could be COVID. They're COVID-like symptoms, but for one reason or another, perhaps a test isn't available. A test could be inconclusive, or a patient is already being treated. Where a clinician might not order a test. You could add another 20 or 25% in terms of that, in terms of uncertainty. But the data comes from an emergency management system that's well-established and the hospitals are all familiar with. So I believe it's accurate data, and it shows that we have about three to four times the capacity. 1,200 to 1,400 ICU beds across the state with about 200 to 300 of those in use currently at any time for COVID over the last, you know, two to four-week period of time. And that information is now being...
Yeah. I guess that doesn't answer the question I'm asking, what the trend line has been, you know, week by week in the last four weeks with hospitalizations. My understanding is that that's gone down.
Well, no, not significantly. It pretty much follows the infection curve. It just has a little bit of a delay on it.
But do you have those numbers, and can you provide that to us?
I do have the numbers. I can provide it to you. I don't have anything that I can share at this exact moment in time, but we can absolutely get you the numbers of hospitalizations and hospitalized cases on a daily basis for state, yes.
That would be perfect. Thank you for doing that.
And the numbers would be available on the state website as well. So if you didn't want to wait, those numbers are publicly available on the state data portal.
I'm not much of a computer guy because I can't even see the presentation because I'm on my phone. And so I'd like to have the doctor present those to us, if that's all right.
Yes, it is worth watching if you are unable to see it. And the graphs are very powerful. You see the curve bend, so it is worth watching it. It is not the same presentation without, unfortunately, seeing the graphs.
Yep. I appreciate that, Mayor. You're, I'm sure you're correct on that. The other is, you know, the last time we had a major pandemic, we've had a few of these. We've had MERS, we've had SARS, we've had all that. But the last one that we could actually model, we've seen these charts, too, dealt with the 1918 flu where we had Philadelphia open up, did everything. They got through it right away. They had, but their hospitalization part got overwhelmed, correct? And then you had the St. Louis model because you were able to compare the two together. So have we taken a look, if you looked at possibly modeling what would happen if we basically, and this is the first time I've ever seen individuals that are healthy be quarantined. Usually you quarantine those that are sick or those that are susceptible. But have you looked at other modeling that would have occurred had we just let those that are healthy go out there and get that herd immunity in place and have those individuals basically go out there and continue to work because they're not in a high-risk category? Have you looked at any modeling like that?
Yeah, yeah, sure. So are you talking about asymptomatic people?
Right, well, not asymptomatic, or those that, those that get this disease that don't get much of an impact on it either. They're sick for two or three days. They're not going to go see a doctor, and they're not going to get tested for it either.
Yeah, correct. That's right.
So what about, you know, have we looked at any models like that?
Yes, my model, my model looks at that. My model looks at that. And so, and here's, so, and I'll be very, I'll try to be very careful and explain to you exactly why this is really important because it's an important point for, I think, everyone here to understand. We have, we have studies. Okay, so there are a couple of studies. There are, there are three studies that have looked at contact pairs, okay? So in other words, where we know that one individual was sick, and then we've been able to identify everyone that they could have potentially been in contact with, even though no one is showing symptoms, and we're testing them even though they're healthy. We are showing that about up to 65% of the people who test as asymptomatic are actually infected and will soon become sick. The number of people who ultimately are asymptomatic and go through a completely asymptomatic progression of the disease is currently estimated at 18.5%. So that means that about 30 to 40% of the people who are sick and feel fine are actually out there getting their friends sick because they're spreading virus. It's incubated in them, and they haven't developed symptoms yet. So if you ask an individual if they're sick or not, they don't know the answer to that. If you give them a test, if you give them a molecular test, and they're sick in that initial window, you can pick out those people who are asymptomatic, infected, transmitting the disease to their friends, family, and loved ones, and just don't know it. So if you put those people to work, you have to do it in a situation where putting them back to work is combined with a molecular test and a contact tracing program. And we do not have those programs yet in place at scale in the state. And when we do, then we'll be able to have a conversation about putting people back to work safely. And when we do, we can have a real conversation about permanently opening up again.
But wouldn't we be better? I mean, I don't, I haven't seen any models where individuals that are in the high-risk category. I mean, people are going to get it under every model. All we've done is delay the fact that people are going to get this disease. It's not going to be eradicated. I mean, unless you're saying that it is.
No, I'm not saying the disease is going to be eradicated. Yeah, all we've done is delay it, and the reason that we want to delay it is because we're saving lives. So there's no reason to delay the disease if it doesn't kill people, right? This is the point. If it doesn't kill people, you don't need to delay it. But if you, if you look at the mortality rate...
That's why those individuals are in the high risk. Go ahead.
If you have a crisis standard of care, okay? So if you have a crisis standard of care, if my father gets sick, and I want my father to go to the hospital. My father has Parkinson's disease, which means that he also has respiratory problems. There's going to be a huge difference in outcomes for my dad if he goes to the hospital and they have a ventilator that he can use than if he doesn't. So by doing things faster, by reopening faster, by having more people be sick all at once, what we're doing is we're increasing the chance that my dad goes to the hospital and dies because he didn't have a ventilator. That's, that's the point of the timing.
But what you're saying, though, too, so what you're saying then, too, is that the hospitals have not caught up because the whole idea behind this flattening the curve was for the hospitals to catch up. You're saying they haven't done a good enough job of catching up, or they don't have the resources available? Because that's what I'm hearing.
No, that's not, no, no, that's not what I'm saying at all.
Tell me what it is, though, because that was the whole idea behind flattening the curve.
No, I understand. No, the reason to flatten the curve is because hospitals would have become overrun if we didn't flatten the curve. And the hospitals still will become overrun if we don't continue to maintain focus on keeping the curve flat. But the hospitals didn't get overrun, so they're not playing catch-up. They're, they're short on resources, and they have some really significant challenges. But they're not playing catch-up because they've moved to a crisis standard of care, and they're trying to get out of it. We've never gone to a crisis standard of care in Arizona. We've done a fantastic job of making sure that we don't get there.
So I think the rate of hospitalizations would matter, then. So that's, I'm waiting for, you know, when you get that information, you know, I'd like to see that because I think that will matter. If we see the trend line going down, then that means that they've done a pretty good job of flattening the curve and been able to catch up or to be able to serve the public at their, the high-risk categories.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Stark.
Hold on, Mayor, I just have a couple more things. It's not completely done. So the one modeling that I would like to see that...
We will come back to you after Councilwoman Stark gets the chance.
I thought I had the floor, Mayor.
No, we will come back to you after Councilwoman Stark gets the chance.
Mayor, that's not fair.
Well, I am chairing this meeting.
I could ask Chris Meyer.
No, I have given the floor to Councilwoman Stark. No, Councilwoman Stark has the floor.
Mayor, you have to hear the other side. You have to hear the other side, Mayor.
You have had the chance to ask at least 10 questions. Yes, you have, and he has already answered the question you have asked again. Councilwoman Stark has the floor. He has already answered your question, and you did not listen to his answer. Councilwoman Stark has the floor.
Thank you.
He does, well, she doesn't, but I'm willing to give it up.
Well, thank you, Councilwoman DeCecio. I appreciate it. So, Doctor, you're saying that even though we are doing a good job in keeping the curve flat, and the most important thing is we've really got to look at some kind of comprehensive testing throughout the state of Arizona?
Correct.
And so where, how, what kind of resources do we need to do that? What, how can the city help get testing available?
So, so that's an excellent question, and it's not entirely in my expertise. But I will share with you what I know. Okay, so I know that there are, there are many resources going on within the state to provide testing, primarily by the universities, by TGen, by Mayo Clinic, by some of the other hospital organizations. Anyone who has a medical research capability to run an RT-PCR test and has equipment to take a nasal swab from an individual can run that test as a standard, standard medical test and get a result usually within a couple of days. The real issue for doing that is that we don't have a system set up to do widespread testing, okay? But, but the capabilities within the state research institutions and hospitals and the state testing laboratory at ADHS, combined with the commercial labs, provide probably eight or 10 different partners that all have tests that they can do. The RT-PCR tests are molecular tests. Again, it's very important to keep these two tests separated from each other because they do very, very different things. They're useful for different reasons. So, but that is going on. We're starting to see there are drive-through point of dispensing sites for those molecular tests where people are swabbing them. I'm more familiar with the ICU's program, which is including conversations about testing frontline healthcare workers and police, fire, medical workers, and potentially critical infrastructure personnel in addition to clinical tests if we're asked to do those. There's a variety of different ways that we can test programs there. The test is quick. It takes about a minute. You put a Q-tip up your nose, and you get a swab, and then you put it in a stabilizing agent, ship it back to the lab, and they get results back within about 24 hours. Commercial tests are similar. Then there's also announcements of programs to run actually huge amounts of serological tests. The serological tests are, when taken at a population level, are going to tell us what proportion of the population had the disease at some point, have antibodies to it, and are potentially safe to go back to work. Although we don't necessarily even know yet whether or not you can get immunity to this disease for a very long period of time. So both of those testing programs, you know, the serological testing is great because if you test positive on a serological test, then you can decide that you've had the disease, you feel comfortable going back to work again, and you're willing to, you know, let's say that you're a grocery store worker or a taxi driver or work at a fast-food restaurant window, and you test positive on a serological test, that's great. You feel a little bit better about that. The molecular tests are critically important to do two things. One is to make sure someone isn't actively infected walking into a workplace environment, and it'll screen those people, especially asymptomatic individuals. And the second thing that it does is, when combined with a good contact tracing program, when you find a test from an asymptomatic person that's spreading the disease and they don't know it, you can find their friends, you can test them, too, and you can stop entire clusters of this disease. Every leading national expert, whether they're an epidemiologist or a virologist or just a public health professional who's involved with any of these programs, is loudly currently calling for increased testing, tracing, and isolation as a way to get that unseen stealth transmission of virus that just spreads throughout the community and no one sees it. People don't even really know that they're sick. But you might, you might accidentally get one person into a nursing home, and then the whole nursing home has, you know, similar to what we've seen, nursing homes with 83 infected patients out of 85 people. When I worked in high school, I worked in, I lived in Worcester, Massachusetts in high school, and I had a job washing dishes in a nursing home. And I looked up that nursing home last week, and so far, eight people in that nursing home and about 35% of the other occupants, eight people died, 35% of the occupants were sick. And the thing was just being devastated. These are, you know, these are tinderboxes for this pandemic. And so even though that transmission doesn't necessarily seem bad for the eight-year-olds and the 10-year-olds that never noticed they've got it, it has the potential to wreak unfathomable damage to vulnerable populations like that.
So, Mayor, I appreciate that, and I think that we should try to develop some strategies to ensure that we can get the testing out there, whether it's trying to figure out ways to do drive-ups, whether it's a way of communicating to the public. I think we need to be a part of the solution and try to get testing out and try any way we can to find people who are willing to help with resources, with funds to help us get that testing. Thank you.
Thank you, very well said. As, as we heard, we do not yet meet... As, as we heard, we do not yet meet the federal criteria on testing. We do not have sufficient testing in our community, but there have been great strides forward in the last two weeks to get better data, including better data for our first responders who we know are exposed to so much because of the nature of their work.
Mayor, may I just finish real quickly?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And Dr. Lant, I have a few other questions, but do we know how many ventilators are available now? Do we have a supply of those? Has anyone looked at that as part of this modeling?
Yes.
And do we have enough and what, what happens if we, I mean, do, are we short?
No, we have, um, so, um, so based on the actual hospital data, my, my, my current ventilator data that I have, we, we're in the low hundreds of ventilators that are actually being used for COVID presently in the state. We know that there are another three hundred and thirteen ventilators that are used across the state for all, all causes. We don't know what. It could be someone has diagnosed, let's say, for example, novel pneumonia. We don't know what it is. That could be someone with COVID that hasn't been tested, or it could be someone with a pneumonia caused by a different respiratory condition, maybe RSV, maybe even influenza. Um, it could be a bacterial pneumonia. They could also be on a ventilator. We currently have expanded the number of ventilators that are available in this, in the state through a request to the CDC Strategic National Stockpile, and there are six hundred and thirty unused ventilators. So that means that we have about five times the capacity presently for where we are in terms of the progression of disease today.
And so, Dr. Lant, and so you're, but you're a doctor of math, of math, correct, of, or you're a doctor, medical doctor as well?
I'm not a medical doctor, no.
Okay, good. So you're looking at stats, you're looking at numbers. Have you looked at the impact? I mean, everyone's looking at the disease itself and I think that's great, but we have other types of impacts too on society. I mean, one of the things I'd like to see is the modeling, and I think people are starting to do that right now. What's going to happen when people are unemployed, when people don't have jobs, people are kicked out of their homes, the increase in domestic violence that we've seen over the last three months, the increase in suicide that we've seen over the last three months. And then if you can do a comparison with that along with the COVID disease, are you looking at doing something like that too? I mean, I, I don't expect you to do it right now because right now you're hyper-focused on the disease itself, but at the same time, looking forward, I mean, are you guys going to be doing any type of modeling like that to compare that, that negative impact on society as people have lost pretty much everything, lost their American dreams, comparing that to the disease?
Yeah, I mean, can you tell me what specifically you would compare so that you have a nice apples-to-apples comparison and not apples-to-oranges or even worse, apples-to-carburetors? Like what two things would you want to compare?
Well, the societal impact, well, you can't, I, I don't know all that. I mean, that's kind of your end of it. But I would imagine you would look at, you know, how people have lost their jobs, how they've been able to survive, how many people went homeless, you know, things like that, uh, impacts that have had on personal, you know, personal relationships, what's happened. I mean, in one of the countries, China, my understanding is, they've seen a forty percent increase in divorce rates because people were living in such tight quarters there. You know, things like that. Look at the societal impacts of actually getting people to stay home, not getting people, ordering people to stay home.
Yep.
Then you can, then you have a, a really wide picture of your, your policies.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I, I appreciate that. I, I think that's absolutely fantastic. These are, these are critically important issues. Um, so I'm, it, it's out of scope for the current project that I'm working on where I'm using mathematics in order to do projections for, for a specific list of things that were handed to us by the state and asked if we could make, make projections for them. I take your point that these are incredibly important, um, events that are happening, um, that are secondary negative externalities caused by the fact that we're in the middle of a pandemic. And so I think that there's, there's a wide range of scholarship where people are looking specifically at risk of vulnerable populations and the way that the pandemic adversely impacts huge communities of people. And please recall from my first slide, like even though I, I may have been making light, when I told you that I'm an extrovert who loves concerts and sports, I meant it. I spend my free time going out and doing these things and supporting our community and I want to be out doing these things as soon as I possibly can. If you want to talk about impact, the relative impact of me enjoying or not enjoying a football game pales in comparison to the value of a human life. And so while the, the human, while the economic impacts are absolutely staggering, a lot of the approaches that are being taken, especially within the public health community, is a safety-first approach. And the safety-first approach requires us to understand the impact that decisions that we make have on human life and not just the quality of life, but immediate death, right? Is this person going to die in the next two weeks or be put at significant risk where they're more likely to die? And if that ultimately ends up happening and you want to compare, I mean, you know, I, things, they're very serious events in terms of, you know, domestic abuse and health and everything else. And I'm a mathematician. I'm not qualified to speak about these things, but I can, I can measure, I, I can measure a signal of hospitalizations and deaths if that's what's provided because we have the tools to do that. And so it doesn't, the fact that we haven't done an analysis similar to that, I don't think in any view like marginalizes or deflates the, the huge consequences of the modeling that I have done and have presented, which is, which is really tied to a very fundamental concept. If we continue to social distance, then we'll get out of this thing with reason, with, with limited damages. And if we disregard that and, and are reckless about it and do some of the things that other states are doing because we value the economy more than, than human life, then we're going to have a body count and we're going to have a huge loss of life and it's going to negatively impact our healthcare system. And if it does that bad enough, that'll drag the economy down from a completely different perspective. So, I mean, that, that's, those are my thoughts on it. I mean, it's not, it's not an analysis.
Oh, no, I, oh, I totally agree with you on that, especially when you deal with the, the human life of it because the World Food Program Director just came out today, just today, saying that the econo- economic disruption of this is going to leave two hundred and sixty million people in famine, two hundred and sixty million. So that is a human life. When someone loses a job, loses their home, can't feed their families, that has a negative impact on them as well. And that has-
Sure.
-a detrimental impact on those kids. I mean, keeping kids out of school now-
Yep.
...creates an economic impact, yes, it does, but at the same time, it creates a societal impact where those kids are now behind. So you're right.
I agree.
You and I are in agreement on that, is that-
I, I think you are.
-the economic impacts mattered as much as they do the other side because the economic impacts have a, a, a direct impact on those people's families. All right, well, I'm done with that, Mayor.
Yeah, I mean, very much. Yeah, okay.
Mayor?
Councilman Noakowski.
You know, Doctor, first of all, I just want to thank you. We've had several experts come in and talk to us about the coronavirus and now, um, I want to thank the Mayor for bringing you along, telling us, showing us statistics. One of the things, being an elected official, people are always asking us, they think we have this magic ball or crystal ball that we can look into and we can tell you when everything's going to open up. But at least you helped us with numbers and how to explain it. And, um, you know, if we open up on May first, this can happen. And if we open up on May eleventh, it's a better chance this will happen. And I think that's really something that we needed to, um, understand as elected officials. I just really want to thank you for taking the time and, and showing us those numbers, statistics, and helping us understand, um, that we're almost to the finish line and we just got to wait a little bit longer to make sure that we're all safe and that we don't have to start that finish line again. And, you know, Mayor, once again, thank you for bringing in and inviting these experts from all different levels so that we get a full picture. So when we're out there in the community and people are asking us questions, that we're able to answer it. So thank you for your leadership and thank you once again, Doctor.
Thank you for those kind words. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Noakowski.
Mayor, this is Councilwoman Pastor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pastor. Go ahead.
Uh, Dr. Lant, uh, I really appreciate your, uh, PowerPoint. Is it possible for us to receive it so that we can go through it and analyze the data and, uh, understand what exactly, uh, in the flattening of the curve and when the, when the curve is going to be flattened and why May eleventh? Um, I understand, it concerns me when we put a date. I, I liked more of like in two weeks or possibly two weeks because when we put a date, us as humans, uh, then look towards that date and then if it doesn't happen, that, then it becomes into a whole nother, uh, anxiety or antiness that goes on because if, uh, my son, who is sixteen, hears May eleventh, on May eleventh, he will be at that door running outside wanting to go socialize with his friends. So I, I struggle with seeing a date and, uh, we love to-
Why, what is your son, I'm sorry to interrupt. What is your son, what is your son planning on doing on May first?
Uh, he's, uh, May first, he's inside my house.
And he's not planning on running outside because he's been given a date?
Uh, he, uh, the date that, uh, he's going to go by is the date of the city and the date that I give. But if I'm hearing, if I'm hearing we're considering May eleventh as a city, uh, then that's a whole different story.
Yeah, okay. So, so let's be, let's be really careful here, okay? Because it, there's, there's a nuance here that I want everyone to fully, fully understand. The reason, um, the reason that there's a date of, of, of May eleventh is because on April the twenty-third, we had three hundred and ten positives confirmed cases, okay? Three-ten. The next several days, we had two hundred and seventy-six, two hundred and thirty-five, two hundred and forty-six, and now one ninety. So when we had three hundred and ten cases on April the twenty-third and have now gone down for a couple of days in a row, that means that if fourteen days after the peak, we're at a low value, we've decreased for that fourteen-day window of time, then the White House guidance for reopening up America again says it is time to check the box for that criteria and if that criteria is satisfied and the one, two, three, four, the four other criteria are also satisfied, meaning you have an adequate testing program where you're not just, you know, where cases aren't going down because you didn't test anyone, right? So if you can satisfy all five of these criteria from the White House plan, then the plan says fourteen days from where we are right now in the state of Arizona is eleven days from now because we are on day three. Okay, so that's, that's why. If something happens, so say for example tomorrow, we get a case count and our case count is three-ten again, or three-eleven, or three-twelve, so we're back up, we've got a new peak, that fourteen-day timer would restart. Now, I'm not saying this is the only way to address reopening from a policy perspective, but I am telling you, this is a pretty literal, literal interpretation of the White House guidance document. Is it going to prevent Arizona from reopening or Phoenix from reopening? Well, if you look at what Georgia did, Georgia said, "We looked at that and we don't satisfy any of the criteria and we don't care, so we're going to reopen anyway." They don't have decreasing cases for, for one day, much less fourteen. They're plateauing and, and Phoenix was plateauing a week ago and we just kept going up. So having a plateau doesn't guarantee that things are turning down. And if you reopen in the middle of that, you're highly likely to, uh, you know, to have a spike. I mean, if, if things go well in Georgia, you know, there's a couple of things we expect to happen. The first is I'm supposed to eat some crow and I'm happy to do that. But the second thing is we should look and, and see whether or not people are choosing to stay home because they don't really have a lot of trust that the government knows what they're doing or that they're doing the right thing. So they decide to social distance anyway and not take their chances at the Waffle House. So, I, I mean, this is, this is important information and, you know, I don't, I, I think it's great when Phoenix is a leader, but I'm not sure that Phoenix needs to be a leader on this point. Let's give it a week or two and see what happens in Georgia and we'll, we'll have some more evidence. The, the downside risk from reopening and then having to, to baton the hatches again just seems really expensive. It seems really challenging, difficult, unpleasant, and seems like it would cause a lot of sacrifice in people rather than just staying where we are for another week. And, and I, I get it, there's people who aren't getting paid, there's people who aren't working, there's people who have a whole host of issues going on right now. But the opening and closing and opening and closing really just extends this timeline from, from weeks to months.
Okay, so I really, uh, I'm glad you provided clarity in that because, um, I didn't capture that, uh, previously and I'm glad you broke it down for me because I think, uh, our general, uh, our constituents need to understand, uh, the breakdown of how this decision was made or where it's being looked at and that you're following the White House guidelines. Um, uh, and in all that, uh, we, as the council, will have to take everything into consideration and look at that along, along with the governor. Um, and, and we, we are, we are facing an economic crisis and, uh, if we continue to, uh, I think if we continue to move further and further, i- if there is a spike, then we know we, we have to start again the fourteen days. Uh, I'm hoping that we can flatten and I'm hoping we can, uh, gradually go into a, a soft open to see what, how that looks like and be able to, uh, get our economy going at least for a bit and, and, and be prepared possibly to go back down, uh, if, if there's a spike and, and everyone prepared for it. Uh, but those were, that's why I responded the way I responded because there were some, uh, I was hearing, what I was hearing quickly and fast because I don't have the PowerPoint to be able to analyze, uh-
Sure.
Uh, hearing May eleventh and that, and I'm like, okay, what does that mean? So really appreciate that you, you broke it down. Thank you.
You're welcome.
With Councilmember Garcia, and, and I think, um-
Go ahead, Councilmember Garcia.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, so is, is this your opinion or, or basically what the presentation is, through the White House recommendations, this is when the opening for Arizona would be and for Phoenix? That's how I'm interpreting that, that's what you're giving us today, right?
Yeah, so the, the modeling projections, that's, that's entirely my work and the work developed by the team of people that I work with. So we've made these projections. They're, you know, they're uniquely, they're unique to Arizona, they're based on some things that are very specific to Arizona. But modeling infections, deaths, hospitalizations, and ventilators is a very standard thing to do. Many modeling groups try to, try to make estimates of these needs. Um, so that's new. The White House guidance, the, the guidance document that I put on the screen, that's the blue background with the six criteria, that is the White House document itself. That's what it says to do. So I've interpreted that, I've created metrics for it, um, based on Arizona's data and I've shared that with you. And so, so the message is, White House says this is the plan, here's where we are currently with Arizona's reporting data, and here's what happens if you run the actual data through the White House plan and what it tells us. And what it tells us is we got about eleven days to go right now and that could reset.
Okay, so, so my concern comes from the White House plan maybe not being right and I think it's less about you eating crow, but to me, May eleventh actually seems too soon without more evidence. And so maybe Georgia's now allowing us the opportunity, unfortunately, they're, they're sacrificing and let us see, but to me, the date is more concerning as it being too soon rather than, than too early. So the, kind, kind of coming from the other side of it, um-
Sure.
Wondering if there's, if there's other thoughts out there, is there other research out there that's beyond the White House that we can also look to?
Yeah, so, I mean, there's, there's a ton of research, okay? So first, first and foremost, there's an, there's a, there's a mountain of research and we are, you know, we're going through additional research every single day on this. Any, anytime there's an outbreak of coronavirus, a major outbreak in a new city or a new town, then, then that's another research opportunity for clinical people to, um, to write research. And it's not opportunistic. We need that information. Like we, like the better we have estimates on these, the better our forecasts and projections come. And, you know, by the end of the summer, the beginning of the fall, when we're concerned about a second wave, we're going to want to have really precise models in order to help us with this. So, um, I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm tempted to add you to my modeling team because you actually, what you're doing is you're talking through your intuition about what's going to happen in the future. And I think that, I think that the eleventh is too early too, but I mean, I, there's a lot of ways that we cannot meet that eleven-day goal and there's one way that we can meet it. The way that we can meet it is everyone accepts the fact that this is really hard, requires a lot of patience, and, and, and we really have to be persistent that we, that we did that we, that we did what we did in order to, to reach a certain state, and we're not at that state yet. So, things could come firing back, and it's a tremendous risk. So, you know, since you want me to predict the future, I would say, um, if we can get everyone to commit, like, really commit, that we wanna be done with this thing by May eleventh, and everyone really, like, everyone stops going to Dairy Queen twice a day. Like, yes, they're open, it doesn't matter, you don't need Dairy Queen twice a day. Then, um, you know, that's what it's gonna take. And I, I, I don't know that the public is even aware that cases are going back up again. I think everyone decided that this thing is almost over, and we just wait a few more days. So, somehow, the public needs to get the Epi signal, so that they know if it's going up or down. And what better way to do it than to, you know, it's, it's kind of like, you know, I've got kids, right? So, when you punish the kids collectively, it's far more impactful than if you punish them one at a time. You make them responsible for leading up to bad behavior, and you tell them that if they can get along with their brother and sister all afternoon, everyone gets ice cream. So, we're all in this together, I mean, we really are. That's what May eleventh means. If, if we do this, we can get to May eleventh. And if we don't, then we're all collectively punished. We've gotta go back, and we have another two weeks to sit on the sidelines, and wish that we had been more responsible earlier on.
Yeah, so, I think there's, there's, I'm not asking you to predict the future, I don't think anybody is, and I think, um, that your, your little arrogant, your arrogant tone is, is bothersome, and, and so I'm just gonna put that out there. But I don't seem, we also have-
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't intend that at all.
Okay, and so I'd appreciate less sarcasm. Um, I think the, the testing, how much proof do we have that the testing is accurate, that we're testing enough people? Cause some of the numbers that we're getting now come from certain SIP codes, and a lot of those SIP codes are not from the, the more impoverished neighborhoods. And so, how much, how ac, how much accuracy do we see in the testing, not predicting? If you don't, if you don't know, it's fine, um, to, to be able to say that it's accurate?
Yeah, so we actually need, we need to, on the serological studies in particular, we actually need to go through a round of testing, in order to know how accurate the tests are. Cause you need a test to validate the test. But they're not, so, I think that we have a pretty low symptomatic rate, a pretty low rate of people who have been, have prior infections in the population. But the test will give false positives. So, we're gonna think that we have a higher rate of infection in the population than we really do, because of the serological tests. And that's from comparing it against other similar serological tests. Okay? The molecular test itself, the estimates that I've heard is it's around eighty to ninety percent effective. But I've also heard people that use it regularly, so, so I think different testing setups can give you increasing accuracy that'll get into the ninety percent. But you're always gonna have some ra, some chance of getting a negative test result.
Thank you. Well, Dr. Lance, thank you for taking the time to share your research with the Phoenix City Council. Uh, it is very important and timely. Right now, in the state of Arizona, we are under an executive order from Governor Doug Ducey to stay home. It is not the Phoenix City Council's decision, but we are key in enforcing it, as is local law enforcement throughout the state of Arizona. And so, it's helpful for us to understand what are the signals, what is the effect? Um, from my perspective, it was good to see that these very difficult policy interventions were showing up in, in graphs that demonstrate we are saving lives. It is also helpful for us as elected officials to have as much modeling data as possible to understand what could happen, depending on the next steps in Arizona. A very different outcomes and impacts on our city, if the governor decides to extend the stay-at-home versus if he decides to end it when it expires in two days. Um, we also really appreciated the opportunity to see the federal guidelines applied to Arizona. Um, as two councilmembers have pointed out, there are many different hu- hurdles one could set up and, and select for reopening. But federal guidelines give us a milestone by which we can compare data in Arizona. So, uh, thank you for sharing this information. I'd encourage people to continue to check for updates, as you share them, both through your work at Arizona State University, and through the Arizona Department of Health. With that, if you have any final words, we would welcome them, and then we will let you get back to modeling.
Thank you, I appreciate it. No, thank, thank everyone for your time. I mean, this is, this information is only useful if it's put in the right hands, and, and I hope that this becomes a valuable resource for you. If I can be of any service to you and your deliberation in the future, please let me know, and I'll be happy to do whatever I can to support you.
Wonderful, well, we are lucky to have a, a national expert in our backyard, and thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
We will next-
Go Devils.
What?
I said, "Go Devils," yeah.
Yeah, we get a lot of Sun Devil pride on this Phoenix City Council, we have a lot of proud Sun Devils. Uh, speaking of, of national expertise that we have in our backyard, we will next turn to our Economic Recovery Update, with our Economic Development Director, Christine Mackey. Christine has stepped up in, in big ways, uh, for our city before COVID-nineteen, and has been a huge utility player, as we battled the pandemic. When asked to go find hotel rooms for people experiencing homelessness, she stepped up and was willing to do that. When we wanted to increase testing, she was there to support our labs in this community, and, and partner with them. She also has done an ama- amazing outreach, just talking to our businesses, and, and getting them resources. So, our very hard-working economic direct, uh, Development Director, please welcome Chris Mackey.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having me here today. Uh, I'm here to give you an update on our economic development efforts, and what we're working on, and where we're moving to. We'll start our presentation. As we look at the economy, um, the global pandemic has shifted the economy, and challenged the economy in ways that we've not seen since World War II. Uh, we have seen, uh, hundreds of thousands of jobs lost just in Arizona. We have seen the supply chain cha, supply chain challenged in ways that we've not seen before, and it continues to domino, uh, down the line. We have now, just to put it in perspective for you, we have now lost all of the jobs that we've gained since the, the Great Recession on its ending, uh, and are continuing to move forward. And the challenge is, there's no, our challenge is, there's no playbook. This isn't something that we've seen before. So, you know, typically, we can look at work that we've done, and how we've worked forward, but we don't have a playbook as we continue moving on. We're gonna need to remain nimble, uh, and be able to respond quickly to everything that's put before us. So, if we look at unemployment in Arizona, in March, on March fourteenth, about three million in claims were paid out. Uh, claims the week of March fif, uh, March fourteenth, were about thirty-eight hundred claims. We fast-forward to April eighteenth, hundred and fifty-one million in claims, and nearly five hundred and eighty thousand, uh, individuals have claimed unemployment. Just to put that in perspective, when we look at the state of Arizona, and as we bring jobs into the market, typically, we'll see eighty to a hundred thousand new jobs come into our market each year. So, should those jobs not come back, some are businesses that are shuttered on the short term, some will be those on the long term. If none of those businesses reopened, it would take us six years to replace the jobs that we've lost in the last six weeks. If we look at small business in Arizona, and by that, I mean those that are less than two hundred and fifty in employee count, there's a hundred and fourteen thousand small businesses with employees in Arizona. They represent about a million, uh, employees, and more than ninety-nine percent of all businesses in Arizona are considered small business. Uh, if you look at, uh, US and the average for small businesses, most of them hold less than one month of expenses in cash reserve. And then we look at our ultra-small businesses, and those are gonna be companies with less than thirty employees, and they're usually still owned by the founder. About two-thirds of our businesses won't receive either the Paycheck Protection Program, or Economic Injury Disaster Loan Funds from our Small Business Association Administration. And then there are, on top of that, those jo, those companies represent one point one million in, of vulnerable jobs over the next three months, and that's thirty-six percent of all the jobs that we have here in Arizona. Uh, unfortunately, as we've been working through this with our experts, and the calls that we've been making, and the, the, the data we've been analyzing, we estimate that twenty to twenty-five percent of Phoenix small businesses won't exist when this pandemic is over. If we look at our industries and our businesses, so now we're gonna look at industrial as a whole, office as a whole, and retail as a whole. If we look at April tenants who paid rent, ninety percent of our industrial tenants paid rent, eighty percent of office tenants in the market paid rent, and just forty percent of the retail tenants in the market paid their rent. So, what that says to us, and along with other data, is the industrial market's gonna recover relatively quickly, also lag behind a little bit by about a year. We're gonna see vacancy rates go up, and we're, and we're going to see rental rates come down. But retail will be, retail, restaurants, event venues, those type of things, uh, we'll see a, a major shift in the way that they do business, and the number that are here. Just one more, um, kind of, uh, data point to put forward for you. As we, you know, we work with large companies that are looking at Arizona, can, uh, considering Arizona for a new location. Uh, most recently, with, uh, our partners, GPEC, they have two hundred and fifteen active prospects. And on March sixth, nearly all of those that they surveyed were conducting business as normal. A few of them, uh, were taking a break for the quarter. Fast-forward to April twentieth, and that shifts dramatically. Uh, less than half are doing business as usual. Um, half of them are taking a break for the quarter, and now we see that slice of the pie that says that some of these projects are on hold indefinitely. So, as we look at that, how do we move forward to best position Phoenix? We have a lot of information moving forward, and we continue to work with our companies, and make considerations as how to help our companies best recover, and get as many of them through to the other side of this, of this economy as we possibly can. So, what I'm gonna walk you through now, are, as my team has been working towards recovery, we're gonna talk about six points, and ways that we're, we would propose to work forward with our companies, uh, in kind of these groups. We'll come back to you in the, in the near future, as we start to shift into other cycles of the, the economic change. So, first is to strengthen our small business assistance. Not only doing our direct outreach to our companies, and working with, with other entities, but really shoring up our small business community associations. We know them as our great partners of The Hub, Nineteen North, Thirty-Touchay, our Levine Group, our McDowell Groups, we've got wonderful groups in Owatuki, and significant other areas of the market. But shoring up our activity with those groups, they have close proximity to their businesses, and they can connect to them easily, so we can see what those companies need, and how we can be most effective. Uh, next is workforce, uh, program shifts and trends. We are seeing, of course, if we're talking about, of, more than half a million people that may need retraining if some of these jobs don't come back, we've gotta really shift the way that we do our job training. There won't be the luxury of having people in a training program for six months or eight months. These are gonna be programs that have to be nimble, and they're gonna need to respond quickly to the ever-changing, uh, support of the market. Uh, we're gonna need to do these, uh, with methods that we've not used before in our training programs, and ways to get our workforce into other job-ready categories. We need to leverage our sector partnerships. We've got great, uh, business sector partnerships here in the city of Phoenix, whether it's in advanced, uh, business services, in cybersecurity, in healthcare, and working with those groups to hear from them directly, what are their needs of their workforce, what are their needs today? How can we quickly shift, how can we quickly stand up training programs that they need to keep adding workforce and new jobs into the market? Next would be our marketing and outreach. Uh, as we look, it's not only for our Phoenix is Hot, and our national marketing programs to draw business back to Phoenix, but it's also to help market our small businesses, their events, their programs, getting them out into social media, and letting people know that they're open for business, and the things that they're doing, uh, to draw more customers. Uh, of course, ensuring new development and construction moves forward. This is gonna be critically important, as we draw, uh, new businesses in, as we see an ever-shifting market, particularly in office, and how they're gonna react to social distancing and spacing in their space today. But we're also gonna need to pay significant attention to training, uh, an additional construction workforce, to keep this industry moving forward, uh, and keep new projects coming into Phoenix on the horizon. As we start to recover, being able to have modern buildings with modern infrastructure is really gonna be the point that we see, uh, Phoenix shifting and taking a leadership role, as we always have in the economy. And then finally, continued business outreach. We've really learned a lot from our businesses in the last five weeks. I am proud to tell you, uh, as of today, the team has, uh, reached out to nearly six thousand Phoenix businesses, and we've catalogued what they are thinking and their needs, we're gonna talk to you about those shortly. But that business outreach, even when we're through this, we have learned a new technique. Uh, city manager always tells us, remember those things through this, that you learned, that you should continue to implement. And for us, that hotline, and significant call outreach to our businesses, more so than just our, our normal business retention expansion program, will be that that we keep. Now, I'm gonna walk you through what we're doing today. So, we're, we're talking about what we're going to do in the coming weeks and, and, and few months, as we move forward. But I'd like to walk you through what we're already doing today. As I've mentioned, we have already reached out to nearly six thousand businesses. We've stood up our Phoenix Business Hotline, those who have urgent needs can reach us easily. We've connected to our small business organizations, so we can provide them assistance through them, to their small businesses, and find out where they're really struggling, and what we can do to help. With our Communications Department and other city departments, uh, we created the Resource Connections Page, the city of Phoenix did, where we were able to provide significant resources, and, and locations of those resources in a one-stop shop, for our companies to log on. And as we were having conversations with them, we could drive them right there. But also, the media outreach that we did allowed them the opportunity to find the information on their own. I think it's really important to know that that page is still very dynamic. As we learn new resources available, as we learn of new grants, as we learn of new programs, uh, we're standing those up very quickly on that program. Uh, we also, I think one of the things that we are probably most proud of is, uh, the ability that we have, that we had in assisting our companies with both the Economic Injury Disaster Loan, and the Paycheck Protection Program. So, as those programs were issued, they were issued incredibly quickly, and the applications were very complicated. If you look at the Midwest, if you look at the Southeast, they are familiar with disasters. They're familiar with needing to recover from those, uh, from those natural disasters. Arizona's not, it's not something that we've seen before. So, we stood up, uh, uh, created a video. We walked through the application, and we explained, in both English and Spanish, exactly the questions that were being requested of the, of the applicant as they were moving forward. We had people that could answer their questions, and if we didn't know their answers, we'd get right in contact with the bank, or the SBA, and get their questions answered. So, while we hear a lot in the market about the frailties of both IDOL and PPP, uh, I can tell you that we're very proud of the work that we did, and still continue to do today, in assisting those businesses with filling out their application, and finding banks that are still taking those application. We also did a number of other videos and how-to links. Um, I, I, to be honest with you, council, I didn't realize how old I looked in video until I saw myself in all these how-to videos on the city's website. Uh, some other things that we did, uh, today, and we're working through, you know Honeywell, we worked diligently with them, as they looked at multiple states across the country to, uh, put up an N-ninety-five manufacturing facility, a, a PPE manufacturing facility. I'm happy to tell you today, that I spoke with them, uh, yesterday. They're two weeks ahead of schedule, and really credited our Phoenix Planning and Development Department, and our city of Phoenix, for being able to get done what needed to get done very quickly with their facility, and they are starting into production now. We have Monday calls with the grocery stores, our big boxes, and our retail warehouses, to see what they need. We've been able to connect them to our police department, to workforce opportunities, and things that they've requested to keep their workforce safe, and to be able to keep these, these facilities open for our citizens. We've been able to work with our e-commerce, as, as we've all gone through the pandemic. We're ordering more from our homes, and helping them find a workforce, and come up with other solutions. Uh, I thought I'd bring one particular, uh, to your attention, in a very creative job fair and hiring that we assisted with, uh, two weeks ago, and that was our very first drive-through job fair. Uh, you came, uh, the announcements went out, you stayed in your car. They interviewed you with your window rolled down, and they are in the process of hiring four hundred new security officers. I'd really like to also commend our city police department. They helped us tear down some barriers that we were having in fingerprinting and identification, and getting the, the, um, access to that done in less than a couple of hours. Uh, job posting boards, you know, we have learned through this effort, we stood up very quickly, a one-click link to, uh, a significant number of jobs that were available, where somebody could really scroll down them, much like they would just a spreadsheet. And what we've learned from that is, you know, pre-COVID, people would click, 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 to get to the jobs that were available. We've learned that we need to have a quick connection, they need to be able to see what's available, and get to those links very quickly. Uh, we've been able to keep construction moving forward, whether it's in our virtual inspections, or our wonderful inspectors who are going out, and still working with our projects. And that's critical to keep our economy moving forward. And we've seen, uh, a, a growing demand on a new industrial sector. So, we're sh, we're seeing where the industrial sectors had had frailties from their activities that were happening overseas. So, now, our companies are switching not only to other technologies, they're standing up a PPE, or other different types of things that are in demand now. Uh, and we're now, we're working diligently to ensure that they stay here and open for permanent business, but also bringing onshoring back. You remember about two weeks ago, we spoke to you about, uh, a, a two million dollar grant fund that the IDA brought forward for our small business relief? Uh, that project went forward very well. We offered in on the, uh, on the Arizona Community Foundation's website, in both English and Spanish. Uh, we received five hundred and fifty applications, two hundred and sixty applications were qualified. And you'll remember, these had to be small businesses, in a low to moderate census tract, or a deck, or directly across from one. They had to be a business that had less than three million in revenue, and it received twenty-five percent- They had to be a business that had less than $3 million in revenue and had received 25% revenue loss directly due to COVID. So those applications were vetted. Uh, we have 260 that were qualified and they were sent out to the, uh, to the Grant Review Committee. They are supposed to be done with them today and we will be seeing the list that are those, uh, those grant recipients. We estimate if they all ask for $10,000, which was the most they could ask for, we can help about 200 companies. Some of them were asking for $7,000 or $8,000. So we'll be back to you very shortly to let you know how many companies the IDA, with support from the city, was able to help. Of course, we had, uh, PCDIC, uh, Phoenix, uh, the Community Development Corporation, and I'll apologize for the graphic on the, on the slide. This is PCDIC and the Small Business Relief Loans. They are accepting applications and it is in our website. Those are small businesses, again, 25%, 25 or fewer employees in a qualified census tract, less than $3 million in revenue, and they had to show a loss of income due to the COVID-19. And we are receiving applications there. I will share with you that some of those businesses that either didn't qualify for the grant, our, our, um, Industrial Development Authority was able to provide them immediately the information on the Small Business Relief Loan. So we didn't leave them empty-handed. They were able to look to see if they qualified on another alternative. So based on that outreach and working with our partners, we're hearing what businesses say they need the most, and I'm going to run through all eight items with you right now. So first, as we all know, is financial assistance. They're all reaching the end.
Chris?
Yes? Yes?
I have a question. This is Councilwoman Pastor. Can you, uh, move back to slide 16?
This slide?
Yes, that $2 million in loan funding, you had spoken about IDA.
Yes.
And how they have, how they had allocated their small business relief loans. Those that did not get serviced, will they just be automatically placed? Is it the same criteria and will they be placed in this batch? Or in this process?
Councilwoman Pastor, that is Mr. Salgado's goal. Those companies that for some reason or another didn't make the qualification or didn't make the cut of the grant program, his goal was to bring this, uh, Small Business Relief Loan Program directly forward to them for their consideration so they could shift their application into this program. That way, uh, his thought there was that way, uh, as many companies as we could help that had applied would be able to be shifted into one program or the other. So to answer your question, yes, that is, uh, Mr. Salgado's goal.
And do you know how many were on a waitlist or did not, um, weren't able to make it through in the sense that the money was already dispersed?
Uh, Councilwoman, I don't know those numbers yet. Uh, Mr. Salgado was working on some additional funding, so I don't know those numbers yet, but I'll have them in the next day or so and I will provide them to you immediately. Um, my, uh, just from the numbers that I'm seeing between the, the Small Business Relief Loans and the grants, I would say we probably, um, would not be able to help probably half of them. It'd be several hundred that we would most likely not be able to help. And I think it's also, Councilwoman, to continue.
Thank you.
And to continue, just to put one finer point on that for you, Councilwoman, we also closed our grant application program as we reached just over 500 applications as we didn't want to tell so many people no. I think we would have received a lot more applications if we'd left it open even longer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so, uh, number one, uh, financial assistance, as we talked about in the beginning, they had about four weeks of cash flow, uh, when they started into this and we are now in the fifth or sixth week, and that is their number one request is access to grants or loans. Number two was, uh, access and guidance on some of these applications, whether they're with the SBA, whether they're with, uh, other grant or loan programs, but making sure that we provide that assistance on those programs in both English and Spanish. Uh, assistance with their utility bills, much like our residents, our businesses in some of them are struggling with their utility bills. Um, others were interested in things that could help if they couldn't convert to a virtual business opportunity and guidelines that could help them so they could stay in business and stay operating when they couldn't turn to virtual like some of our companies had. They're very interested in more communication on the recovery efforts and how they should be conducting business. They would also like some, uh, kind of some pre-information for their businesses that they are expecting a downturn, they're part of that supply chain or domino effect, and they're expecting a downturn soon but haven't experienced it yet, and they're wondering where they go for resources. Uh, very important to them was training for their employees, whether it was to help their employees that had been furloughed, get training for new jobs, or companies that are seeing the need for thousands of additional employees and getting them trained quickly. And then finally, uh, a really assistance with marketing, once we get through this, to draw their customers back and draw, draw activity back to Arizona. So as we look at, at kind of that fine line, you know, without a cliche, uh, we are, um, the Phoenix and we do rise from the ashes and we will get through this and we'll, we will come out of this stronger. But as we've talked, uh, as we talked about today, we've got to pave the way for the Phoenix of the future. And as we pave the way for the Phoenix of the future by providing those support to our businesses, we will come out more resilient, we will recover, and we will see a resurgence in the future of the economy here in Phoenix. And our team is here to help you in partnership with our city council, with our other city departments and our partners out in the community. And with that, uh, members of the council, I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Thank you for that excellent data and plan and for all the work you have been doing to reach out and support our businesses. Questions or comments?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor.
Wonderful. Go ahead, Councilwoman Pastor.
Thank you. Uh, that was a great presentation, Chris. I wanted to know, uh, what your thoughts were right now when you said, uh, "We're here to assist." What are you, when you say that, what does that mean?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, boy, if, you know, I, uh, uh, six weeks ago, I could have told you exactly what that meant as an economic developer when you say assistance. What we've found is that we have to be very nimble in what they need. When I say assistance today, I mean helping them find capital, whether it's through a Facebook grant or a, a Google grant, or figuring out how to fill out their applications on IDOL or PPP. Sometimes it's just a shoulder for them to cry on as they watch their business of 40 years disintegrating in front of their eyes. It's helping their workforce. Uh, it's things like, uh, uh, we were, we've been able to, uh, work with Allen Stevenson's team. They've been incredibly helpful in getting signage for those businesses so people know they're open, that they can, they can see them there and they know they're ready for takeout. Um, you know, really helping them understand those type of things. So when I say assistance today, uh, boy, it could be anything that we're asked this morning. We'll figure out a way to, to figure out a way to help them, and if we can't help them, a way to keep them in our mind so if those resources come forward in the future, we call them right back.
Okay, because I, I just wasn't sure, I, I wasn't sure if you were, uh, possibly thinking, uh, financial assistance or partnering up just like with the, uh, IDA and PC, I don't know that term, uh, and figuring out other partners and providing, uh, assistance.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, yes, that would, right now, that would be probably the most critical assistance, particularly our, our ultra-small businesses could receive is, um, is financial assistance. And, and we're looking every day, we're working with all of our partners to find, um, entities that would be willing to invest in that same program, the grant program that we had. We had it stood up. It, it appears to have been very effective and efficient. So we are out every day trying to find more money to help complement that grant program so we don't have to say no.
Thank you.
Mayor? Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I've been called from small businesses and also larger businesses within the city, within my district, that they've been getting a lot of outreach from your department, but more, more important, not just outreach, but solutions and a way to, to network with other businesses. I think the, um, website that you created, that, um, wwwphoenix.gov/resources, it's a resource for businesses where they can actually talk to each other, work together and, and make things happen and look for grants and, and programs and share information with each other. But the really important thing is that whole Team Phoenix approach where you're bringing people together to come up with a solution. One of the things that, um, the Small Business Assistance Program, incredible, uh, what you've done with, um, our Phoenix IDA, with Juan Salgado and yourself to create the $2 million to help out those 200 small, um, businesses. Small businesses give back to the community even more so than the larger ones because that, most of that money stays here. All that tax revenue that they end up making, uh, all the benefits that they may end up making from their business, they put it back in their mortgage and their, and the grocery stores. So it stays in the, in the city of Phoenix, stays in the state of Arizona. So I just really want to thank you. I was just wondering if there's a way to extend that program and maybe, um, Ed, a question for yourself is to look into some of that care money that we've gotten from the city of, city of Phoenix and extend that $2 million maybe into doubling it somehow and challenging some of our partners that are out there to match that some of it. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you once again, Chris.
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, thank you for that question. It raises a good point, which is the city has an allocation of federal cares money. There is some guidance from the Federal Treasury Department about the use of that money, and among the guidance is an allowable use for, uh, aiding businesses and employees that have suffered from business interruption, which is absolutely what we're seeing here. So I think that would be something for the council to consider, uh, in giving direction as to how we should structure a program for the federal cares funding. And certainly Chris has laid a strong foundation, uh, for the work that the council's already authorized. That could be a component of that effort that the council, uh, could put structure around. So I think the cares money could be used for this and I would encourage the council to put a larger framework around that cares money, and this would absolutely be an important component of that.
Mayor?
Uh, thank you, city manager, and thank you, Councilman Noakowski, who you've been a very strong advocate for our most vulnerable businesses. Councilwoman Stark.
Yeah, I'd like to echo what, uh, Councilman Noakowski said. I think it's vital that we help these small businesses and if there's a way we can look at the cares money and see how we can help them, I want to do that. So I would love to see staff come back with some proposals. I think, and I see Chris smiling, she's probably already got some ideas, but I, I echo what, uh, Councilman Noakowski said. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Stark. Also a strong advocate for our small businesses. Uh, we certainly have a council that is passionate about our small businesses. Vice Mayor?
Yes, um, also, I know our small businesses and I know that this is something that everyone has said, one way or the other, our smart businesses are struggling and in return, our working-class families are also hurting. As we adjust to our new reality for this foreseeable future, our constituents are looking at us for some solutions, um, to this whole pandemic that just occurred on us a few weeks ago. But I think that now is the time, we need to support our small businesses through low-interest loans and do what we can to provide direct relief to their employees. I applaud the companies that have made the difficult decision to cover healthcare costs and provide proper sick leave for essential workers during this crisis. But on the other hand, I can't get on social media, I couldn't get on social media the past few weeks without seeing stories from around the country of corporations abusing government programs meant to provide direct relief to our small businesses. Um, so I don't expect, I don't expect anyone on, or necessarily to answer this question, but however, what lessons do we think that we have learned from the federal government and other states on how we can avoid this issue and ensure funding is getting into the right hands of those that are in most need? I know we talked a little bit about this, Chris, earlier, um, but I don't know if you can allude a little bit to this?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Guardado, um, I think what you're talking about is what we've seen with the Paycheck Protection Program and some of the businesses that have received funding from the Paycheck Protection Program that were perhaps less fragile than some of the businesses who really needed it, and it kept it out of the hands of businesses who really needed it. Um, as we worked with, with Mr. Salgado, that was our greatest concern. We, we didn't want Phoenix to be challenged by, um, the, the money not getting into the right businesses and the, the companies that truly needed it. So I think the framework that we've provided around our grant and our loan program really precludes those bigger businesses from, from, um, participating in the programs as we've structured it. We've made it so that it is, it's companies that will be able to benefit, those smaller businesses, those, those businesses that are, you know, perhaps it's a husband and a wife and two children that are running a restaurant and, and those type of things. So, um, we were really, really excited to be, you know, council guidance on the framework of making sure that the program that we supported with the IDA and with PCDIC would go to those businesses that are the backbone of, of the, the, the business ecosystem here in Phoenix. So thank you for asking that, and we'll continue to keep a strong focus to ensure that those are the businesses that receive that benefit.
Great, appreciate it. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Mayor?
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes. Just like everyone, I want to thank you. I think that the IDA program was great. One of the gaps I think we still have is some of the, I guess, cash, cash, uh, businesses. So for example, beauty salons, tattoo parlors, a lot of folks that may not keep the books in the same way that more traditional businesses do, and they're both having a really hard time filing for unemployment because of their system and also for some of these grants. And so I think moving forward, great to see that we're thinking about using, uh, the money that we obtained through the CARES Act in this way. And really, I think we should quadruple, whatever the number is, we could talk numbers later of, of how much we're going to give to small businesses and support small businesses. But I really think, um, just being able to think outside the box with some of those non-traditional businesses like I, like I mentioned earlier.
Mayor, Councilman Garcia, we've been looking at that, um, as we were, even with our, uh, our, we're supported with the IDA and PCDIC's grant and loan program, they did still, to your point, they still had to produce information that some of our microbusinesses that might be a sole proprietorship, like you're saying, a, a hairdresser or a salon worker, those might not be able to produce on the sole proprietor side. Um, I, I, as we've looked at what other states have done around the country, I think should the council choose to move forward with some type of a program, I think we, we may have some mechanisms in working with our law department and, and with others to create a program where those sole proprietors that might not have the same type of documentation that others would have, we may be able to work with them as well. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Williams?
Councilwoman? Uh, I have a question for Chris. Excellent presentation, by the way, and excellent job you're doing. For those small proprietors, the singles that don't have the bookkeeping, do you expect to set up some type of a trading program to help them regain the knowledge that they need to possess and to look forward with this? I mean, it doesn't sound that simple.
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, that's an excellent point that we've been working towards. So through our CDBG funds, our Community Development Block Grant Funds, we have a program called Management Technical Assistance, and that is exactly a program that they have that is free to them, where experts can share with them how to be able to really take advantage of, uh, you know, of the bookkeeping and what the benefits are that that gets and, and marketing and law advice and all those different things that those small businesses can have. So absolutely, um, we have been working with Spencer Self's team on looking at that Management Technical Assistance Program, particularly for those ultra-small businesses and sole proprietorships and how we can help them, uh, you know, looking at future business growth and how they work. So, uh, that is a tremendous point I neglected to make, so thank you for, for talking about that.
And how are they getting word of what you're doing and offering?
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, we are, uh, working through, we're, we're working with Spencer right now on the Management Technical Assist-
And how are they getting word of what you're doing and offering?
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, we are working through, we're working with Spencer right now on the Management Technical Assistance Program that the city's run for quite a number of years, but being able to expand some money into that program. So we'll do outreach through, certainly get information out to our council offices as we did with the grant programs and others for you to get out, but it'll be through our social media and through those small business organizations. We also find our churches and our neighborhood organizations are great ways to be able to make those connections with those ultra-small businesses and those sole proprietorships. So we'll be working through those avenues that have great connections to those individuals.
And I have a question for Ed, then, as follows. Is that something that we could put some money into to help expedite that and get a larger program going?
Mayor, Councilman Williams, my reading of the regulations would be that yes, if we wrap that into assistance for businesses that were dealing with the disruption from COVID and training them to be more resilient in the future, we could tie that there, which I think we absolutely could, to tie Councilwoman Garcia's earlier, Councilmember Garcia's earlier point with what you're saying, Councilwoman. I think we could make that a part of a COVID response project.
And how soon could we consider that and make a motion to do so?
Mayor, Councilman Williams, I would really encourage us to think about the entirety of the CARES funding, because I think what we want to be careful is that we don't do, we should look at it all in context of what we're deciding. Every dollar we spend of CARES Act funding is a trade-off of something else that we're not funding. And while it's a lot of funding in totality, we want to be careful with how we do that. So I would say, you know, in the next week or so, depending on how the meetings get scheduled, we could set that framework up, the council could approve that framework, and then we could start working at individual implementation of programs like the ones you've heard about today with business assistance.
And Ed, may I add to that? Right now, for Thursday, we are looking at scheduling a discussion about CARES Act, but particularly around our city programs, such as supporting our first responders in this unprecedented time. And so I think that dovetails nicely with what several council members have suggested, but we do have a very valuable tool in the CARES Act, and we should use it strategically to help this city come out with as much strength as possible from this great challenge. And Councilwoman Williams, I don't know if you were finished or not, but I thought that was useful information, I hope, for council members.
Ed, yes, and I thank you.
Mayor, this is Councilwoman Pastor.
Wonderful. Councilwoman Pastor.
I have a question for Chris and I have a question for Ed. The first question for Chris, my understanding is that there's about 60 or 65 people that qualified for the IDA loan, but all the money had been dispersed. So I would like to make a recommendation that the 60 that have already been approved and vetted, they be part of the other 2 million, PCDIC, I think, or PC something, and to be part of that. Do you need a motion, or how does that need to work?
Mayor, Councilman Pastor, as I understand it, are you asking us to have them switch them over or to find more money?
I'm asking the 60, 60 to 65 people that applied for the small business loans with IDA?
The 60 that were, that applied but were likely not make the, will run out of money before we get to them?
Correct.
Yes.
The 60 that, the 60 that qualified, but we no longer had any money, or not we, IDA no longer had any money.
Right.
I would like to make the recommendation for them, then, since it's the same criteria or very similar to that criteria, to be part of the 2 million with PCDIC or whatever the term is.
I think I'd suggest if it would be okay, if we could come back on Thursday and give you the specific numbers. I'm looking at Chris and she's, yeah, we can, because you have a meeting so quickly, we could bring that back, and then you could make a more informed decision with that information, but it could be done really quickly.
Okay. I don't think the criteria changed, did it, Chris?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, no, the criteria didn't change between the grant program and the loan program. The only difference between the grant program and the loan program is the $10,000 grant program was a grant. The businesses didn't need to pay it back. The loan program through PCDIC would be a 1% interest loan, and so they would have to pay the money back.
Okay, so then, so then I guess what I would say is those 60 that qualified for IDA, to reach out to them to see if they're willing, wanting to take a loan with a 1% interest rate.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We'll absolutely, we'll absolutely make sure that that gets done. You bet.
I'm just saying, I don't think I need any more information. I pretty much understand the system and how it's working. I just, I just want to get those that qualified, get them what they need.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so my second, my second question is to Ed. You made a statement right now of saying that we'd like to come back with the framework. What areas are you looking at in the framework of using the CARES Act money?
Thank you, Councilwoman. I think the framework is really laid out in the federal guidance, and I think there's a couple of places. There's the internal piece of funding city operations, and then there's the external piece of dealing with community, the community impacts of COVID. And you, the council is considering one of those very extensively today, which is the business and employee impact. But there could be other things. Last week, the council also addressed a homeless strategy that could, that is also eligible for CARES Act funding. There are things in the guidance that talk about telework, that would be more of an internal thing, but the impacts of dealing with distance learning needs in your educational system, food insecurity, all those things could be part of a more comprehensive council strategy on using the CARES Act funding.
Okay. Can you provide, I think maybe somewhere, it got lost for me, but can you provide all the council people the guidelines and semi, kind of the framework that they're saying as your stating this, so that then on Thursday, we can have a discussion on what each one of us feels or looks like, areas or buckets that we would want to use the CARES Act money for? I think that would give us some information and educate ourselves in order to be able to have a lively discussion on where the CARE Act money and the buckets that we would like to see it in. I just want to be prepared for that discussion on Thursday.
Absolutely, Councilwoman. It's about a five-page, five or six-page, it was an attachment to report in the last couple of weeks. We will resend that, we'll get that to every office in hard copy, and we'll send it electronically. I think, to your point, Councilwoman, it does provide a good basis for conversation, and it's relatively short, which is unusual for federal guidance, so that's a nice aspect of it as well.
Okay, and when they say city operations, Ed?
Yes.
Does that include airport?
We don't think so directly because the airport got its own allocation of stimulus money for the city operations at the airport. We could have a conversation, though, about the small businesses at the airport and whether from the, not from the city operations side, but from the COVID impacts and business disruption of COVID on the small businesses there.
Okay, because I think that's good to know for that. Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I ask Ed another question?
Please, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you. That is part of this, we're now into summer, which I'm hoping, I think you and I had a brief, brief conversation, that we could provide individuals some assistance when it comes to utilities, especially water and air conditioning. Could that be applied to the small businesses, too?
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, yes, we believe that if the utility, if their utility bill problems stem from COVID-related business interruption, the council could choose to allocate some monies to that in the same way that we could allocate money to individuals who are experiencing utility bill issues because of COVID disruptions to their employment status or their business status. So we believe that you could do both individuals and businesses, as long as they're tied to COVID-related disruption.
Well, that's encouraging because I think it's very important that some of them are hanging on by a thread, having little income, but if they could have some assistance with utilities, they could have a big impact. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Well, thank you to Chris and your entire team.
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski.
Councilman Noakowski, please.
I'm sorry, I was just going to, we're going to work on all this COVID funding and which departments, which areas should we be spending it, because I know we're talking about the business aspect of it, but there's so much other needs. So I was just wondering, are we going to schedule something in the near future?
And so what we've talked, what I tried to talk about was on Thursday at Policy, we would talk about, I think, maybe just what you are suggesting. I think if, I had a little bit of static, but a lot of our city departments that have been so affected, that is the area we know most about it at the city of Phoenix is what is happening with our first responders and others who have had to step up in a big way and been so affected by this. So beginning with that, and then that will also give us a sense of what is available for the many, many needs we have throughout this community so that we can prioritize a little bit of triage.
Mayor?
Councilwoman.
When you talk about the first responders, can you get, provide a little bit more detail? Are we talking about overtime? What are we talking about when you're talking about first responders? Are you talking about PPE? I'm not understanding.
I think any of the COVID-eligible costs, which would include everything you just listed, protective equipment for our first responders, overtime, testing would be an eligible expense for COVID and CARES Act funds. Right now, thanks to the generosity of both the private community as well as Arizona State University, I believe we are not expending city dollars for testing for our first responders. But I think several council members have already asked that we expand testing to more of our essential employees. So we've talked about, we have so many employees, I think several council members have talked about detention officers, park rangers, who need that testing as well. So, and I think there are many expenses beyond that for our first responder related to CARES Act. But I know you have been working a lot in that area, and I suspect you are asking this question because you have an idea.
Oh, no, I was just, I was just wondering exactly that, because I do would like to expand testing, not only to, I believe right now, what is happening in testing is the other unions have joined and are, got private dollars and are going to be, the essential workers, I believe, are going to be tested. What I would like to see is also more testing with those that have already been tested to further, to move further within the city and city employees that are frontline people.
Makes perfect sense and very responsible. And I think CARES Act has a lot of restrictions, but one of the things that is very clear is that we can use it for testing, given limited resources, I think should be a priority. Wonderful. Thank you all for the great suggestions, and thank you to our staff for the hard work. We are adjourned, and we'll see you again on Thursday.